12th, 2024 regular meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. If we could all please stand, face the flag and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, if we could have roll call, please, Ms. Anderson?
Yes. Member Seer?
Here.
Member Willner?
Here.
Member Allen?
Here.
Member Creel?
Here.
Member Krug?
Here.
Member McDonald?
Here.
And Chair McGalpin?
Here.
We do have a full quorum for this evening, so we can proceed as planned. Next up would be the approval of the agenda. We do have the agenda in front of us. There are three items. One of them is old business, two new business items to review this evening. So we do need a motion to approve the agenda and a support, please.
A motion to approve?
A support. All in favor of approving the agenda as presented for this evening's meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The agenda has been approved. Next up is the approval of the minutes from our January 9th, 2024 meeting. Hopefully you've all had a chance to review those. And at this point, we will take any revisions, corrections, or additions, if there are any. If not, we do need a motion to approve the minutes as presented in our packet, please.
A motion to approve is presented.
And we need a...
Second.
Perfect.
He's second, I'm sorry.
Andrew, okay. Yes. All in favor of approving the minutes from the January 9th, 2024 zoning board of appeals meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The minutes have been approved. Next up is our first item. It is old business. It is application PB 0124. The applicant is representing parcel 042517358017 at 2114 11 Mile Road on the north side of 11 Mile Road between Henley and Berkeley. They are requesting a use variance for a nonconforming use of a gas station in the M1 industrial district. Ms. Anderson, if you can please provide us some background on the applicant's request?
Yes. 2114 11 Mile Road dates back to 1956 with the use as a gas station. The previous business, Henley Gas and Service Center, was in service as a gas station until approximately 2013, 2014. The board was provided Google Maps that showed prices on the gas sign. And then the signage stopped having the gas prices in 2012. The property continued as an automobile service repair establishment until the property was sold. Property is currently vacant. No definitive date has been confirmed on when the automobile service repair establishment seized operation. M1 does not permit a use of a gas station under permitted use or a special use. A nonconform... I'm sorry. We ask that the zoning board of appeals determine an approval or denial for a use variance to allow 2114 11 Mile Road, the business as a gas station. For a variance to be approved, the zoning board of appeals, it shall meet the standards of Section 138 606 of the zoning ordinance based on findings of fact. We request the zoning board of appeals to determine if undue hardship exists on the property and the requested use variance should be granted. Motions for approval and denials have been submitted in your packets for your convenience.
Does anybody from the board have any questions or need any clarification on the background information that has been provided before we proceed? Okay. Then if the petitioner can please come forward, state your name and address for the record and tell us about why we should be granting you this request.
Good evening, board. My name is Farid Kaji. I purchased the property at 2114 West 11 Mile in the city of Berkeley about approximately about a year and a half to two years ago. The property was not approved by the DEQ for being not compliant. And we got it to be approved by the DEQ to open it as a gas station. There was... There was some testing that needed to be done. We have an approval letter from the DEQ in your package. And we are looking to open it back as a gas station. It was always a gas station. Looks like a gas station. You know, we're not looking to change anything in it. We're just looking to reopen it as a gas station. And we're seeking your approval.
Okay. Thank you very much. If you can have a seat. At this point, do we have any questions for the staff or the applicant? So we do not have any comments from anyone who is not here. We'll open it up to the public as well. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to come forward and share their thoughts or opinions on this, please do so. We need to state your name and your record... Your name and address for the record, I'm sorry, and then you can tell us.
My name is Brad Cochran. I'm at 2147 Princeton. So my backyard basically backs up to the rear of the gas station. I had watched the minutes from two weeks ago, whenever the last meeting was. And I completely understand the situation that you guys have a code that you guys need to go by. I think really what it obviously needs to come down to is the fact that the gentleman bought the gas station thinking he could operate it as a gas station. It's always been a gas station. The sign, the pumps, everything has always obviously been looking, seemed to be a gas station since we've obviously lived behind the house. Live at my house with two and a half-year-old, two-month-old, and a very tired and overworked wife. So at the same time, we appreciate that there's people that are trying to take care, maintain these tanks, that they want to be up to standards. They want to be operating as a service center for the community. You know, it's obviously, I think we all come to the understanding that there is Jack Skarwosch that sells overpriced gas at 11 Mile. And then you're not finding anything until you get down to near Southfield. I think as a focal point of our community where he can provide a benefit to the citizens, I speak obviously as one that see the benefit of him getting the use variance to operate his business and provide a livelihood for his family. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that's in attendance this evening that would like to share their thoughts on this request? If not, I will close this portion of the public hearing and I will open it up for discussion amongst our board.
So this was on last month. I mean, we were all... We all... I mean, Steve, you were the only one that wasn't here.
Yeah.
So, you know, we debated back and forth and then it was decided that the applicant was going to withdraw and come back next month.
I watched it live on TV. I had COVID, so I wasn't allowed to leave the house.
So, I mean, my position hasn't changed from last month. I still think, you know, unfortunately, it's a sad situation. But it's eight years out of nonconformance and it doesn't meet the standards of allowing a use variance.
Mr. Allen?
Thank you. One of the things that bothered me about this is there's a group of people who are trying to rewrite our ordinances and have been working very hard at it. And this would be outside of those new ordinances. Am I correct?
Be outside of them?
I mean, it would affect... If we were to allow a gas station in there, it would be counter to what the new rewrite is.
And it's counter to what it currently is today.
Yeah.
Correct.
Correct. That is true, but you should focus on the standards for the use variance. But yes, it's an accurate statement.
So, Ms. Anderson, thank you for providing us the document. I found it very helpful, which helps gave more context and clarification to the standards and how to apply them. And I did review everything and there's a couple of things that I want to state for the record. Number one, there is a 180-day period. If a property does not continue to operate in the manner that it is zoned, then it reverts back to the original zoning. That is what happened in this place, in this situation. So when the previous property owners decided not to invest money into bringing those tanks up to standards and that 180-first day passed, the property reverted back, making it not zoned properly to pump gas. So that is not anything that we can consider. That's what happened to this property. Number two, so there is a length of time in which it did not operate, almost nine years. Number two, the amount of money unfortunately that you invested in this property and the work you have done is nothing that we can consider. That needs to be taken off the table and it is not any factor that plays into our decision. Number three, the fact that this property may sit because the zoning lapsed is personally, I believe, is unfortunate, but that is the situation that we're faced with. We have to make sure that you comply. There's a reason for us to grant the variance and right now there's not. Simply because of the fact that we can't consider money, the results and the ability to pump gas lapsed. And also, we have to assume that as a purchaser of a piece of property, that you knew what that was property was zoned. That's not our responsibility, but as a purchaser, you need to be well aware of what you can do and you can't do. And we have to assume you did your due diligence. And that's how I feel as well. I have to agree with you, Mr. Willner.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with everything, all of that. The property can still be used as a service station.
It can absolutely be used. And I believe, I truly... It's one of those things, if you were to ask me personally and I was not sitting up here, I'd say I'd love it to be a gas station for a variety of reasons. But the problem is, when I took this oath and I said I would serve, I have certain standards that I have to comply with. And unfortunately, I can't. This portion of the meetings, we're opening it up for our discussion at this point.
Last month, when we talked about it, I was more for granting the nonconformance again. In reviewing some training and looking at it more over the last month, I do feel like it has been a long time since it was a gas station. Too long to probably go back and change it again back to a gas station. And it's unfortunate, but I just think they've let it lapse for too long.
Mr. Allen?
Yeah. Item D in the standards. The need for the variance is not the result of actions of the property owner or previous property owners. This is an incorrect statement because actually, action and lack of action are why we're sitting here. So I personally don't think that item D can be used in there and that brings us down to not having enough.
Correct.
I disagree. I mean, the...
No, he's saying that it is a result of the property owner.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Right.
Two sets of property owners.
Yes. He's saying it is created when that statement says that the need for the variance is not created, but he's saying it is created.
That's right.
Yep.
Well, words matter. I'm not sure we can read the word inaction into letter D. And as I did last month, I'm going to make the argument for approval because we are here, the public, and we're going to make a record about it. So the building or land cannot reasonably be used. That's a key word, reasonable. It's a two-garage shop. He's testified he's not a mechanic. I understand that's, you know, it's part of our consideration. It goes to the reasonableness of the use for a approved use such as, in this case, a mechanic shop. So the building or land cannot reasonably be used for any of the uses permitted by right or by special use or permit in the current zoning district. I would make the argument that it can't reasonably used for anything else. We both, we've all acknowledged it's probably going to sit vacant and be blighted because it's not going to be reasonably used for something that's going to actually make a profit one day. It's not going to improve the property. B, the need for a variance is due to the unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property. We all acknowledge that having four tanks of gas underneath a property is a unique characteristic within the context of this community. It is unique compared to other properties that do not have four tanks of gas underneath it. C, the proposed use will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. We now have testimony from a next-door neighbor that suggests that that's not the case. I think we'd all agree that C is met here. And I just don't think you can read the word inaction into D. I do this real estate stuff for a living and the words matter. So when they don't have the inaction, I would argue it's the action. The need for a variance is not the result of actions of the property owner, previous property owner. Not the failure to perform, but an actual affirmative action. There was no action taken by the previous property owner that caused those tanks to be tagged and he was unable to afford the $200,000 repair at the time. Mr. Kaji came in and did that. It's obviously not the result of his actions. So I would read that very literally and find that it is not the actions of the previous property owner or the current property owner. And I would make a motion on those terms to approve the use variance.
Okay.
But then a motion, are you making a motion?
He's going to make a motion. So do we have support for his motion? No support for the motion? Okay. So we can either open it back up for discussion or we can take a motion to deny the request for the variance?
I mean, I, you know, obviously the rest of us are... Maybe it should be denied, but just to go back to your reasoning, blight is not a... You can't use blight as any consideration. Unfortunately, it's not.
It goes to the reasonableness of the use.
It can reasonably be used as the building it stands. It can reasonably be used as a service center. It can. That's very reasonable use.
Not by this applicant.
One would...
Somebody else, doesn't matter about this applicant.
One would argue that if someone would have known they couldn't pump gas, they would have done the financials to figure out that it's not feasible to operate in that use.
The results of the... I mean, I strongly disagree on the... It is a result of the action of the previous owner.
For the sake of...
Yes.
For the sake of polite argument, the... It is, this is the result of the property owner, the actions of the property owner, previous property owner. And his actions were he decided not to follow up on the 180 days.
Well, he decided not to invest in bringing the tanks up to be... I'm missing that word, I'm sorry.
Operable.
Operable or... So he decided to let the certification of those tanks lapse.
Yes.
And he stated that at our last meeting.
Yeah, respectfully, if I get hit by a car and have a $200,000 medical bill, I don't choose not to pay that. I physically cannot pay that. But point taken.
Yep.
Okay. So is there any more discussion or are we ready for a motion?
I'll move to deny in the matter of PBA 0124 parcel 2517358017. Motion to deny the requested use variances from Section 138 363 and Section 136 364 of Berkeley, of City of Berkeley zoning ordinance to grant a use variance under Section 138 153, nonconforming use that does not conform to applicable zoning ordinances, ordinance regulations based on the following findings. Once a nonconforming use has stopped in the building that houses the nonconforming use remains vacant for 180 days, any subsequent use of the property shall be conforming. Do you want me to read the...
A through D?
Yeah.
We can just...
I think if you just, we just need one, right? You just need to state that.
Yeah. Just all we need is one.
The building or land can be reasonably used for any of the uses permitted by right or by special use permit in the current zoning district. So it can be automobile repair or something like that, or something different that conforms to the area.
A second.
All right. So we have a support by Seer, a support... We're voting on your matter.
And you're done?
Yep. Okay. And we have a support by Mr. Willner. If we could take a roll call vote, please. And this is a vote to deny?
Yeah, vote to deny. Andrew, member Creel?
I do not vote to deny.
Member Krug?
Yes.
Member McDonald?
Yes.
Member Seer?
Yes.
Member Willner?
Yes.
Member Allen?
Yes.
And Chair McGalpin?
Yes. I'm sorry, sir, we deny your variance.
Thank you very much.
Next up is application PBA 0224. It's for Hill &amp; Holmes representing parcels 042517478029. This is located on the north side of Columbia between Stanford Road and Woodward. They are requesting a dimensional variance for approximately four feet and three-quarters inches on the west side yard setback. A minimum of 15-foot setback between the dwellings is required. As you may recall from reviewing this, we did discuss this before and the petitioner has come back and they have requested a lesser variance than we originally discussed. So if you could go ahead and give us some background, please?
Yes. Parcel 2517478029 dates back to at least 1934 when the Western Parcel 948 Columbia structure was built and is nonconforming to the current side yard setback requirements on the east side of parcel 2517478028 of the minimum five-foot setback on the side yard. Parcel 042517478029 is the original plot at lot size of 40 feet by 119.10 average depth. The requested 4.67-foot variance on the west side yard is in balance with the deficiency that parcel 478028948 Columbia's nonconformity has on its east side yard setback. The requested variance would have 10.89 feet between dwellings rather than the 15 feet dwelling required. The applicant exceeds the total side yard setback requirements per 138 526 Schedule of Regulations of a total of 15 feet for both side yard setbacks on parcel 2517478029. With the proposed structure, total would be 20 feet, .28 feet for both side yard setbacks. We ask the zoning board of appeals to determine an approval or denial for dimensional variance of 4.67 feet on the west side yard setback. Please note in the report, under the standards for review, under A, it indicates east, but it should be west. And with the property, it's to the west, but it's that property's east side that has the only 11 inches from the lot line. For a variance to be approved by the zoning board of appeals, it shall meet the standard of Section 138 606 of the zoning ordinance based on the findings of facts. We request the zoning board of appeals to determine if there are unique characteristics for practical difficulty of the property and the requested dimension, dimensional variance should be granted. Motions for approval and denial are included in your packet.
Perfect. Do we have any clarification or questions from Ms. Anderson?
I did have like two questions. So I know this was, we heard this previously a couple of months ago. What, maybe the applicant can tell me, but what was the width of the house on the previous time? When the... Do you know?
They were requesting over an eight-foot variance previously. So now they're down to, they are requesting 4.67.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. The lot to the direct west?
Yes.
Are both of these lots owned by the same people?
They have historically been, but the property owner of 948 Columbia wishes to sell the property.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And was this the one where the property owner in 948, they were the one who built it so, such that there was not a feasible building to go in between these in the original?
No, no.
We had one like that recently.
948 Columbia was built in, what did I say, 1934. And it was, both those lots were plotted. This property has never been split or anything. This is originally how it was plotted. The house, when it was built in 1934, was built 11 inches away from their eastern lot line, which then they always had a vacant lot next. Well, now they want to sell it. It's plotted. It meets all setback requirements for the lot.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Not to be considered with what we're talking here tonight, but I'd like a public record, if we could, of the severity of the drainage problems on the vacant lot.
So that has been brought up. We do have comments from some people who are not in attendance, but we are not... While there may be issues with drainers, that is not for us to discuss, debate. That is handled by another department within the city. So we need to take that off the discussion, off the table for discussion or consideration in approving this.
I didn't ask for it to be taken into consideration.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, but we cannot consider whether or not this will improve or impact drainage issues.
That's true.
Okay. So if there's no other questions, if the petitioner is present, if they could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please?
Patrick Ray, Hill &amp; Holmes.
So tell us a little bit about why you're requesting this variance, please.
It's kind of like new, old business, right? I mean, when we came in last time, unfortunately, I wasn't here. And the, it seemed that the primary concern was that we were asking for too much, which, you know, after going back and looking at it, I can see where you're coming from. So we re-engineered, we redesigned, and we took a different unit and we shrunk it down to what I would consider to be the smallest possible buildable, marketable, livable home for the property. And, I mean, the site plan sort of speaks for itself as to why it is we have to ask for this. You know, we've done this before and it's worked out well. And I know that it's not part, but I have my moment here. I know it's not part of the consideration, but I am aware of the drainage, the drainage issues. And I know that's not part of the consideration, but we are going to address that because you can't, we simply can't shed water onto another person's property. As a side note, so that's why we're back with a half request, as it were.
What was the dimension last time? Do you remember?
The dimension of the house or the dimension of the request of the variance?
Both.
Gosh, I don't... I think that we were trying, we were asking for an eight points, eight and a half.
Eight point zero six.
Eight point zero six, which would make the house 25 feet wide, give or take, which is already as, you know, I mean, you know, if you look at the dimensions, 20 feet is...
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So at this point, I will ask if there's anyone... Or, I'm sorry, I'm going to open it up to the board and see if there's any questions or comments that we have and then we'll open it up to the public. No, okay. So before we proceed with opening up to the public, if there's anyone here to speak, we do have a couple email requests that were received regarding this. The first one is from Chuck Terrell. And he has asked that we make this part of the official record for this. And he urges that this variance... official record for this, and he urges that this variance, uh, request not be approved. He states the lot in question on Columbia is unbuildable. Besides being too narrow, as is the topic of this application, the grade of the lot is wrong for a build. The grade is feet below neighboring properties and regularly floods. This has been the case for decades that I have known of this lot. To raise the grade to the level neighboring, of the neighboring lots would then divert water flowing onto adjacent, adjoining parcels. Per Berkeley code two six dash three three five, new grades shall not be established that will permit an increase in runoff of surface water onto adjacent properties. The existing or natural drainage of land shall not be altered so as to obstruct, impede, accelerate, channel, or concentrate the flow of storm or surface water onto the land of another so as to cause damage thereto to create a nuisance thereon. The other, uh, piece of communication we have is from Josh and Alyssa Roman who reside at nine two two Columbia Road. They did provide some correspondence and it basically says, we understand that there's been a request for a dimensional variance on the lot west of our home. We do have a few concerns about the home being built here. We understand that we cannot prevent something from being built if it is up to code. However, this, this will not be the case if the variance gets granted. One of our concerns is that building a new home will have a new, unique and newer look and change the aesthetics of our neighborhood as it already is. Along with the look of the home being different, it'd also be significantly closer to one of our neighboring homes. This could drop the property value of not only that home and property, but also all of those of the surrounding ones, including ours, solely on the fact, um, that the homes are too close to one another. As new builds continue to go up, our taxes will rise as well, which will put the burden on low income and fixed income families. We also understand that the water and drainage issue is something that the builders will have to abide by if this passes. However, we are already having issues with water coming into our basement as the lot floods during the winter and spring as it is. If a house is built on this property, we are concerned that even with proper drainage system, it will still get pushed to our home and property and cause more damage. We are unaware of the coding for building a home on an elevation as we could not find anything about that on the Berkeley website. But if it is to be built on an elevation, it has more of a chance to push more water onto our property. Our last concern is that if there is any tree removal being done along our property lines and any damage occurs during that, we would also, would also greatly affect us as homeowners. Overall, we feel this could negatively impact our community as it would not only impose financial losses in equity for homeowners nearby and potentially higher taxes, but could also cause potential damage for our neighboring homes. Thank you for allowing us to express our concerns. Josh and Alyssa Roman. So that is all the public comments that we have, um, on this particular.
Is there not one in our packet?
Yeah, there is one more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you don't have it, I have a copy right here.
Oh, can you please, I'm so sorry. You know what?
It wasn't in the back sheet, it was on the desk here.
Oh, didn't I read it?
No, not the one.
Okay, thank you, so sorry. Okay, we have, so this is from Elliot Ross, and they object to the application of dimensional variance for approximately four point six seven feet of the parcel number zero four two five dash one seven dash four seven eight dash zero two nine adjacent to nine forty-eight Columbia and nine twenty-two Columbia. We are concerned that the proposal will have a negative environmental impact that will not allow the property to be reasonably used. We believe the proposed proposal will not beautify the city or improve the neighborhood. We have lived at nine two one Columbia since nineteen eighty-six. The vacant parcel has always had significant drainage issues at all times of the year. An example referred to, and they have a picture that was taken on January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Vicky and Tommy, Tony Garcia, formerly of nine twenty-two Columbia faced similar dimensional variance issues approximately twenty years ago. The city denied the variance brought by then homeowners of nine forty-eight Columbia. And they asked us that this be submitted for the record, and as I said, there is a, um, a picture that they have provided as well. Okay. So if there's anyone from the public who wishes to come forward and please speak on this, if you could state your name and address for the record and then to share with us your thoughts?
Hi, everybody. My name is Don Walker. I live at nine forty-eight Columbia, uh, AKA The Cellar. I'm a bit nervous, so I apologize, you'll have to watch me squirm for a little bit. Uh, I, I was here in November and I didn't speak and I regretted it. But, um, a little bit about myself, I live at nine forty-eight Columbia, I have two children, three and eight, and my beautiful wife. After our variance was denied in November, we worked with Helen Holmes, did our due diligence, and you were right, we could have, we could have gotten the variance down, and we got it down to what I think is probably going to be, I think for, for Helen Holmes, this is gonna be the last straw. If this doesn't get approved, they're not going to purchase the lot. And if, if the lot isn't purchased, it's not going to be developed, and the grading's not gonna be fixed. You hear about all the drainage concerns. My uncle is, uh, a retired, um, successful excavating business owner, and had he still been in business, he probably would have given us a good deal on grading the, the lot. And back when we had a dog, we used the lot, he used the lot. We thought our kids would use it more, but they don't. We do have a trampoline there, but that's just because we have the space. But yeah, it does flood. In fact, we had ducks last week, and my three-year-old thought that was great, and it, it's cute for a minute, but now it's just a, it's a big muddy swamp. And, um, my uncle will tell you, Helen Holmes will tell you, and I'll tell you, the way to correct that is to build the house. I mean, the way these lots were set up a long time ago, they're, they were created below the street line with the intention of digging a basement and filling out the rest of the yard and grading it out to the street. If you don't take out that basement and fill out the rest of the yard, it's gonna sit below the street level. And then with the grading, going back to the back, um, of the lot, we, we, we have a pump, we have a hose, it get really muddy every season. And we've always had the intention of never doing anything that would affect others, you know? We've heard stories of people opposing anything done on this lot because people are afraid that the water's going to go into their, into their, their yard. We would never want that. In fact, some of our neighbors, we had to tell them, you can't put your downspouts from your roof shooting through the bushes into our yard. Although we do get a lot of water, you're not helping. We need you to send it out to the street. And if someone builds a house there and corrects the grade, now, we could spend a lot of money, bring in some field dirt and, and grade it out to the street. It's a lot of money for a yard that our dog who passed away no longer uses. So that's a little bit about the flooding. Uh, if, if this is approved, um, the grading will be fixed. Um, you know, there was a lot of speak about, um, about equity loss, which is interesting to me because this will raise the property value of the homes with the new, with the new home build. But also, it'll allow us to replace our garage and our front steps, and we have about three layers of driveway, and both my kids just started playing basketball. My three-year-old is playing basketball. It's absolute chaos, but we have a little basketball hoop, our, our driveway stinks, and a new driveway would be great. So increasing the value of the, of the properties around us, but also increasing the, uh, quality of life for a Berkeley resident. And, um, I understand that, that building a house on your street is not going to be fun. In fact, it's gonna be painful for us, especially with a three-year-old and an eight-year-old. And our three-year-old loves trucks. He's gonna be outside as much as he can watching the, the tractors and whatnot. But that shouldn't be the reason why this variance is disapproved or denied, um, because if, if you don't want construction on your street, um, don't move to a street that's got a vacant lot. I realize it'll be uncomfortable, but if we didn't need the variance in order for somebody like Helen Holmes to profit from building a house, then we wouldn't need to be here. We would just build the house anyway. And, and it, it's just, I'm afraid that, in November, there was a lot of, a lot of concerns spoke about drainage, um, a lot of things that had nothing to do with the variance, which is what we're here to talk about, right? The distance between the two houses. Now, to put this into perspective for you, when I open my front door and I look outside, we're directly across the street, I went and measured with a measuring tape, it's seven foot two inches from one house to the other. And then there's an AC unit. And I never even noticed prior to needing to come to the zoning board, because it didn't affect me. And the house that they're building being next to our house only affects us and the people who buy the house. So how does, aside from the construction, I feel like the only thing that, the only concerns that really need to come into play here are the ones that are regarding the distance between the two houses. Am I right? Please correct me if I'm wrong. And I, I brought a, a whole packet thing, it turns out I was supposed to submit that earlier today for you to see, just to show that we've done our due diligence, um, to understand the zoning board. When we came here before, um, we thought it was just a formality, and we didn't respect the process. I feel that we've done as much as we can to respect the process, and I ask that you please don't take this decision lightly, because this means a lot for me, me and my family. I think that's about it. And thank you for your time and your consideration.
And thank you for coming back with a, a more flexible plan that does lessen the amount that you need.
Thank you for watching me squirm. I hope it wasn't too painful.
Thank you. Thank you for coming forward. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on this, on this agenda item? Okay, so we read the public comments that we had received, and we've heard from the public. Um, I will now close this portion of the meeting and open it up for discussion amongst ourselves. Who would like to start us off?
I'll start.
Mr. Willner?
Yeah, I kinda still hold the same position I did last time. The, the lot was never split. It's the original platted size lot, just the minimum lot size to have a house. The house meets all of their own setback requirements. So I'm, I, I, I'm in favor of granting this. I mean, they did reduce the house to twenty feet wide, which I think they came down quite a bit in there with the house. You know, the, the only thing is on, on the side where there's less than fifteen feet between houses, um, I believe there's a fire marshal, there, there, there was some, no, there was some previous thing about being.
They would be fine. It's a five foot, anything less than five foot would require, you know, fire separation, so.
I, I'm in favor.
They'll be ten feet from each other, the dwellings.
Okay.
Yeah, if I recall correctly, yeah, we, the issue last time was that it wasn't the mini, the minimum variance necessary, um, and it appears by all accounts they heeded our concerns. I don't find any of these other things to be particularly relevant, um, even if we were to, to consider them or had the discretion to consider them. And so I, I agree, Mr. Willner, I, I'm inclined to approve it, approve it.
Okay, anyone else like to comment, or we'll be ready for a motion? Mr. Willner, would you like to?
Sure. I'm, I'm making a motion to approve, uh, the matter of PBA oh two, oh two two four. Do I need to read, I had to read the whole thing. Parcel fifth twenty-five seventeen four seventy-eight oh two nine. Motion to approve the requested variance from section one thirty-eight five twenty-six of the City of Berkeley zoning ordinance, ordinance to grant a variance of four point six seven feet at the west side yard where fifteen feet between dwellings is required that does not conform to applicable zoning ordinance regulations based on the following findings. The need for the variance is due to, due to the unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property. Need for the variance is not the result of the actions of the property owner or previous property owner. Strict compliance with the ordinance will unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for a permitted purpose or will render conformity with those regulations unnecessarily burdensome. Requested variance is the minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice to the application as well as other property owners, and the requested variance will not adversely impact the surrounding properties.
Okay, so we have a motion, and Mr. Creel was, uh, supported that motion. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Uh, Member Krug?
Uh, yes.
Member McDonald?
No.
Member Seer?
Yes.
Member Willner?
Yes.
Member Allen?
No.
Member Creel?
Yes.
And Chair McGalpine?
Yes.
Okay, five to two.
So your motion has been approved, so you can proceed. And we do appreciate you coming, reconsidering, coming back, um, that is greatly appreciated. Okay, so, uh, our final piece of new business this evening is application PBA zero three two four. It is Berkeley Business Center LLC located at twenty seventy eleven mile road, parcel twenty-five seventeen three eighty-two fifty-one, north side of eleven mile between Henley and Mortenson, and associated parcel twenty-five seventeen three eighty-two zero four seven, east side of Henley between eleven mile road and Princeton, Princeton. And they are requesting a variance for parking. If you could please give us some, uh, present the, the findings for this, please, Ms. Anderson?
Yes. Parcels zero four twenty-five seventeen three eighty-two zero five one and zero four twenty-five seventeen three eighty-two zero four seven, uh, twenty seventy eleven mile. Housed a warehouse business for many years. Per the current parking requirements, in order to meet parking per section one thirty-eight two one nine five, one space per two hundred and fifty square feet of usable floor area. The usable floor area would need to calculate at approximately four thousand two hundred and fifty square feet from a fourteen thousand five hundred square foot building. In nineteen seventy-one, the parking requirements for a warehouse was one space for every one employee in the largest working shift or one for every seventeen hundred square foot of floor area. The applicant is requesting a parking variance for a warehouse business with no retail. The proposed business plans to have approximately six to ten employees. We ask that the zoning board of appeals determine an approval or denial for a parking variance for twenty seventy eleven mile. For a variance to be approved by the zoning board of appeals, it shall meet the standards of section one thirty-eight six oh six of the zoning ordinance based on findings of fact. We request the zoning board of appeals to determine if there are unique characteristics for pr- practical difficulty of the property and the requested parking variance should be granted. Motions for approval and denial were included in your packets.
Okay, do we have any questions before we proceed? Yes, Ms. Air?
So the previous owner or renter of this building was drought?
Yes, they were there.
And they, they were mostly warehouse, correct?
Yes, and they did actually have a little bit of a retail.
And they were, they were allowed to, what year did they start?
Uh, two thousand and sixteen.
And did they change, did the rules change since they started there?
Well, yes, there previously used to be an ordinance on the books for administrative review approval. So, um, without having the, I looked back at the business license application when it was applied for, but there's no notes kept in regards to their formula. So, uh, it's possibility that it was done under the administrative review, which, uh, it was ordinance one thirty-eight six oh three administrative review where the community development director and the building official were able to do administrative review approvals. And that was repealed in May of twenty twenty.
That rule?
That ruling, yeah, was taken off the books.
That is no longer, that is no longer in effect. So when this came forward, what applied when drought had it no longer is in existence, which opened it back up to, to this. which opened it back up to, to this.
Yeah, I mean, when it originally was opened in, um, when the business originally opened many years ago, 1974 timeframe, when the building and the parking lot were all combined and became a parking lot, the ordinance in 1971, as I had read, you know, was a much lesser requirement. And that was an existent bus, business for many years.
Operating as a warehouse.
Yes, yes.
When with the previous tenant, was there any complaints about parking? Any issues, any violations, anything like that?
No, no, I didn't, I didn't get any that I recall of hearing any complaints on it.
I have a, one question. There's the, so the parking rewrite that we're in the process going through, how many square feet, does that change? Is the, the new, and I know it's not really.
Yes, it will change. Um, I can tell you, I, I don't have the figure off the top of my head, but a typical requirement for a warehouse distribution center type use would be one space for 750 square feet. That's fairly common. We haven't nailed down all of the exact recommendations.
Yeah. So by our current ordinance, it's two, by our current ordinance, it's 250 square feet per, uh, one parking space per 250 square feet. So that's, um, as I had said in the report, um, that the, where am I, I'm sorry. Uh, let's see, warehouse parking is one of the lowest parking spaces per square footage of usable floor area required. One per 250 square feet of usable floor area. The property could not be used for any purpose without a parking variance under our current ordinance.
But if that new ordinance is adopted, it would be compliant?
We don't know, we don't have those, we don't, we don't have those figures yet. We don't know what it will be. I mean, we have what we've discussed and what, but it's not going to be adopted until fall time.
So another thing that we should consider as we're listening to all this is that we do have the ability to put certain conditions on, on approval if we were to grant a variance for parking. Something like one, we would, could look at what the largest, the shift, what shift has the largest number of employees working? And then how we could apply that it cannot exceed, if there's 10 people on the first shift, they cannot, they need 10 parking spots. They would need one for each employee. So if they went to 16 or 20 people on that first shift, then they would not meet the condition that we've placed on this approval.
And we can see what the applicant has on his.
So it just, we can look at it as another alternative as well.
It's a good catch, because these variances go with the property for life. And I just don't want to see a situation come around where there's the overflow of the parking comes out on the street.
Correct. And I believe you said, when we, I was looking at it, I believe there's, um, in, in one application, they stated a number of employees under 10. And another one, and in maybe it's our packet, they still stated 10, six to 10. So that's what, that's what the number is that we're actually looking at. So that's something we can ask the petitioner as well. Okay.
And the conditions would also kind of stay with the variance approval, correct?
Yep.
So, and how would that, well, I guess, how, how is that communicated to, say they, it turns over?
That's communicated to the new?
It would be on our record and our administrative would be responsible for making sure that it's carried on through.
In the perfect world, that person would come, if that was going to be the case, the per, the person would come, they would talk to the city, they would ask if what I'm intending to use is approved. They would then share with them, yes, it can be used as a warehouse, but there is this condition. And then that person can determine whether or not they want to proceed with the purchase of the property.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, if there are no other, if we have no other questions for Ms. Anderson, I'm going to go ahead and ask the petitioner to please come forward and share, uh, any background information they have about this request for a variance for parking. If you could state your name and address for the record as well, please, sir.
Uh, yes, of course. Good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Taylor Balamere. I represent the owners of the property at 2070. Thank you, Kim, for your help in letting me pick your brain for the last three weeks over this subject. Uh, I appreciate your time. So, uh, as Mrs. Anderson, uh, explained, um, uh, previously, they had some authority to approve this. We haven't had any issues with parking with regards to the property. And as Ms. Anderson mentioned, there was even a retail aspect to it. So this did attract more cars, uh, which the current use would not have that retail aspect to it. So, uh, with the history not being an issue, not raising any problems, uh, we asked for the variance. In addition to this, I represent developers, um, across, uh, not only the United States, but the globe. Medical space gets approved at about 200 square feet per parking space. And this is for the high traffic that they deal with. So 250 is putting this warehouse space pretty close to medical. Uh, across the United States, and I understand municipalities are different. I, I'm, I'm on board with this. I, I dabble in all of them. But the, uh, uh, normal warehouse space, as that was mentioned by, uh, Mrs. Kepbalansky. 750 is on the conservative end. I've had McKenna do studies for us in Arizona, in Colorado, uh, in Alabama. And warehouse space generally goes for 750s on the low end to one per 1,500 square feet, uh, which would put us in compliance. Um, if not, it's one per 500 square feet. And then the use is going to require something, or I might have to cut the building away to just add parking. It's been there, it's, you know, you mentioned it as the drought building. It has some presence on 11 Mile. Uh, I don't want to buy Mr. Najee's fill station for 500,000 now that he's dumped that much money into it and make it a parking lot right on 11 Mile. So, thank you for your time and consideration, but that's, that's what we're asking for. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any questions at this point? Is there anyone else? Okay, so then I will go ahead and, um, I think Ms. Seer did. Oh, I'm sorry.
Do we know how many shifts there will be working?
If you could come up, state your name and address for the record. So I would assume we want to know the number of shifts, the time of the shifts.
Yeah.
And confirm that there's no, be no retail.
Yeah.
Mike Stanley, representing the Chef's Warehouse for 2070 11 Mile. The plan is to have one shift. Earliest start time would be 5:30 AM. That shift would last until approximately four o'clock. And that would be four days a week, Tuesday through Friday.
Thank you. And then do you know the number of people?
Right now, we have nine people. I don't anticipate it getting over 10. And to your point earlier, if we were to get over that 10, I would certainly, um, ask for that permission to, uh, to go forward.
But if we went back at what we talked about, there would be 17.
Well, there's 17 parking spaces.
So there is a little bit of flexibility. Go ahead.
What about loading of vehicles or like, how do the products get delivered or that kind of thing? Are, are we talking big vehicles?
You're talking a, a, a tractor trailer that would come four days a week in the morning. It would unload the product, get it unloaded as quickly as possible and get out of, of that area. From there, we have four domicile trucks that would go ahead and reload and then be on the road and then come back at the end of the day. You're, you're, you would ideally have one person in the building plus a, a couple of salespeople in the building throughout the day, but most of the time that building is going to be vacant.
And assuming that those four trucks then take up four spots as well, correct?
Correct.
Anyone else? Okay, so we'll go ahead, um, and we will open it up to the public is, um, we do have, um, one piece of correspondence that we received on Friday, and it is from Elizabeth Joyce. She says, uh, in her email communication, "Good morning. I've received the notice of the meeting regarding the request for the variance for parking at the above recited address. I have concerns about the parking and type of business that will occupy the warehouse." Her questions are, will they have more than 17 employees? Will they be selling their products from the warehouse directly to consumers? The excess traffic due to potential insufficient parking creates a burden and safety concern for the residential neighbors. Employees and/or customers looking for parking on the neighborhood side streets and using neighborhoods' driveways to turn around can impact the surrounding residents negatively. If the existing parking is insufficient to support the proposed new tenant slash business, I would ask that the request for the variance be denied. Your consideration for the safety of the neighborhood, neighboring residential property owners is appreciated." And that is all the correspondence we have. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak or share their thoughts on this, I would ask you to please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing as there's no one here, uh, from the public who wishes to make, um, a comment or share their thoughts, we will close the public portion of this, uh, item and open it up for discussion amongst ourselves.
They, they confirmed there was no retail.
Correct.
Correct.
What is the product? Do we know where it is?
I don't know if we've been told what the product is. We know there's four trucks coming in every morning, unloading, trucks are going out, coming back.
It is.
Food related.
Food distribution.
Okay.
I mean, you, you can't, the pro, the property really can't be used for, if the variance isn't granted, because it doesn't meet the, the current parameters, it can't, it can't be used for anything. So to me, I'm inclined to say it's, it should be approved with some sort of parameters in place so that it doesn't get out of hand for whoever takes it over next or, or, or if they grow and all of a sudden they've got 20 people there or something.
Yeah, I would agree with that. And it's a perfect building. It's a refrigerated building, basically, and they, it's, it's set up just for that.
Yep, I agree with both of you. I think that as long as we put a parameter on the number of people working on a shift, I feel pretty comfortable with it.
I think we could go as high as even 12, if you have the four trucks, say for one extra space and, um, I mean, we can certainly cap it lower, but I think in the interest of not having to come back here in case they do expand a little bit, we might want to give ourselves a little wiggle room.
That's a very good point. Um, one question I do have is you stated that four large trucks come in, bring in the product. One of the things I did think about when you were talking about that is what is it like when those four trucks come in? What time do they come in? How many are coming in at the same time? Is it going to create any kind of issue with the, the neighbors, uh, from, from noise or anything like that? And I don't know if you could answer that? And I don't know if they come in at a specific time?
I would anticipate that the truck would get there about 5:30 AM. That would be a tractor trailer. And from there, the local box trucks would get loaded, um, once that tractor trailer is gone. So the key is to just get that truck in and out of there as quickly as possible.
The tractor trailer does, because you're, you're receiving door, you're right, I mean, really close to the road. Does that tractor trailer go, can that back up all the way into the building so it's not blocking the street?
It's, it's, it's very tight, but yes, we can get that, that inside the, the building.
Okay, Mr. Allen? All right, thank you. Unless it pertains to that.
No. Is there a privacy sound wall on that lot?
If you look at the site plan, the building and the truck well is, you know, right there at the building. And the parking lot is back here. So there's, as far as any residents, you have a full parking lot between, it's not like that is right there behind where the residents are. If anyone needs to see that, I can pass it around.
And I don't know if we can, we can assume this, but drought had trucks coming in and out as well.
And the other warehouse business prior.
And another warehouse, so they probably operated much in that similar fashion. And it does not appear there's a stack of residential complaints.
It's important to note that the concerns addressed by the resident in this email that was read into the record seem to be sufficiently addressed by the applicant.
Right, it was more or less whether there's tons of retail traffic coming in, and that would not be the case.
Yep.
Yes.
And no more than 17, not even close to 17 employees.
Right. Okay, so are there any other comments or questions? And if not, it sounds like we might be ready for a motion on this particular item. Who would like to, uh, start us off here?
I'll do it.
Okay.
Uh, matter of PBA 0324, parcels number 2517382047 and 2517382051. Following is a motion to approve the requested variances from section 138, 219, 5 to permit a parking variance based on the following findings. The need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property. The need for the variance is not the result of actions of the property owner or previous property owners. Strict compliance with the ordinance will unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for a permitted purpose or will render conformity of those regulations unnecessarily burdensome. The requested variance is the minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice to the application as well as other property owners. And the requested variance will not adversely impact the surrounding properties.
Are we going, are you going to add in there some language?
Yeah, the provision being that they are not permitted to have more than 12 employees on the, on, on any given shift, right? So as to not render the risk of any unnecessary congestion in that parking lot.
I'll support.
All right, thank you. Uh, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Member McDonald?
Yes.
Member Seer?
Yes.
Member Willner?
Yes.
Member Allen?
Yes.
Member Creel?
Yes.
Member Krueg?
Yes.
And Chair McGalpine?
Yes. So your motion, uh, for a parking variance has been approved with the conditions that we imposed. Okay, so next up is other business, um, staff and board member reports. Okay. We do have, I don't know if you're going to touch on.
Well, there was no other business, uh, staff and board member reports. There was the community development monthly report for January in your packet. And the zoning ordinance steering committee activity update for, um, for February was in your packet as well.
Also, um, I just wanted to let Mr. McDonald and Mr. Creel know that their terms do expire, um, July 2024. So we do, if you would like to remain, we do need, and we'd love you to, you stay, I'm not, you do need to reapply for the position so that we can go through the process of presenting it to city council for approval. Um, and, and then, as you know, we also do have, uh, two alternate positions available. We do have an applicant that has been vetted and that we will be presenting to the city council for approval. So at this point, it appears if that proceeds as we anticipate, um, we would have one, um, open spot for an alternate. And I do want to note that it happens to be someone who sat in the audience that was impacted by one of the petitions we had in front of us, and that is how he became interested. So if there's anyone watching, listening, or viewing this at some point in the future and you have interest, we do encourage you to apply.
What's the deadline for that?
Uh, for.
For our reapplication?
Open until filled.
For your reapplication?
Yeah.
Oh.
So your term would start again in July? So we're trying to get a little bit ahead of things. You have some time.
Um, let me see, I have the email. It is, you need to let, uh, Charlene know by March 1st.
Oh, okay.
So, get with her this month.
Sorry, I missed that part of March, so. Okay, uh, if there's no other staff, um, or board member reports, I would open it up to, um, Councilman Hennanen for liaison report.
Yeah, the only thing I was going to mention was the zoning ordinance rewrite. You guys have the, in your packet, uh, the latest update on that. And we have one more meeting before we then turn it over to the planning commission and back to council and to the rest of the community. turn it over to the Planning Commission and back to council and to the rest of the community to, you know, start looking at the drafts and finalizing that and hopefully wrapping that up by autumn. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, um, and we appreciate that and thank you for your updates. Uh, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak or provide comments? Okay, and I need a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:10. So if I could have a motion, please, and a support.
You got a motion.
Wait, who's, uh?
Mr. Willner, Mr. Allen.
Okay, thanks.
All right, can we have a vote, a roll call vote, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, all, all in favor of adjourned the meeting of the February 12th, 2024 Zoning Board of Appeals, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed or would like to stay? All right, well, thank you so much. Do we have anything for March?
There is not any cases for March, so.
Oh, no.
Deadline was Friday. All right. Thank you very much, everyone.